I'll call this meeting to order of the City of International Falls Regular City Council Meeting. It's 5:30 PM. The date is July 7, 2025. Please rise and we'll say the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can be noted for the record that all members of the council are present this evening. Thank you. We will move next to approve the agenda with any additions or deletions. I do have one addition which I have passed out to council. Are there any other additions or deletions this evening? Seeing no further additions or deletions, the mayor would entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by councillor Wagner.
No second.
A second by councillor Buller. Any discussion? Question.
Aye.
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 Well, yes, agenda is approved unanimously. Thank you. Next, approval of minutes from previous meetings. First, minutes of the Monday, June 16, 2025, Regular City Council Meeting, followed, secondly, minutes of the Monday, June 23, 2025, Special City Council Meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve minutes sets one and two at this time.
So moved.
Motion by councillor Wagner.
Second.
Second by councillor Holden, discussion on minutes one or two. Seeing no discussion, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Minutes from both meetings are approved unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to payments of claims and approval for payment of accounts payable, I will begin reading now, first with transfers. City of International Falls transfers $851.87 to Fund Number 101 General Fund from Fund Number 812 Lodging Tax Fund. Next, accounts payable and claims. City of International Falls claims $482,130.99. Airport Commission claims $63,684.9. Airport Major Capital Project claims $385,231.71. Total accounts payable and claims $931,046.79. Is there a motion to approve these payments and claims?
So moved.
Motion by councillor Wagner. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by councillor Kayler. Discussion is open. Question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Bills are paid unanimously, five zero. Thank you. Next, we have our audience open forum where an individual may come forward to discuss topics germane to city affairs, name and address for the record, and limited to five minutes.
Good evening. Bobby Burnett, 1906 Avenue. I was just looking at the minutes and can you tell me this Bolton and Merck Engineering Services, $130,938.50, is that last month that you paid out that? It's on page one of the minutes from last meeting.
From the June 16?
Yes.
I will defer that question to both Betty and Jason. And if we are unable to answer that, we will certainly get you an answer.
May I find me? I'm gonna have to look up on the ledger in which we paid that, that, excuse me, on that meeting. It's probably some of May.
Okay.
If we paid it on June, the June 16 minutes, it's mostly probably May's expenditures, May items.
So that would be May? And that?
I could, I will verify that though, and I will, you know, get back with you on it, but that would be my.
Okay. The only reason why I'm asking is because it just seems like a lot of money for contracted services when, if we're gonna contract services like that, maybe we don't need all the people we have. Do you know what I'm saying? And I guess that's up to you guys, but I guess if that's a monthly fee that you're paying, that's a lot of money in my book.
The, I think that your inputs appreciated, I would like you to know that, and I think the first step would be, we would like to get you the information that you requested. Some of going forward throughout the summer with some of the projects that are open, some of those expenses are capitalized into projects, like when we mill and overlay a street, but much of the time they're bundled.
Okay.
Which is why we wanna make sure that we get you the pay app or the actual.
Okay.
With every check, there's a claim.
Okay.
With the form and the bill that we received and how it's allocated.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Sharon Baldwin, Chief Zero Cedar Road. So I have a question. My understanding from the last meeting is that we got $167,000 worth of insurance money back for the band shell, and I found out that that was just to have people look at it, well, we were just being reimbursed for design, whatever was happening, but there was over $700,000 that it was actually insured with, or for. But it's come to my understanding that the reason that that was held up so long was because they were changing the design of the band shell. And if that is the case, then I don't understand why they would do that, why they would add cost onto that. So on top, so that's where I'm at right now, and you, and I talked to you, Mayor, and you told me that they're in the process, they've gotta design together.
There is a committee.
So my question is, were the people who vandalized the band shell, were they ever given a demand letter of any type to pay restitution or to be turned in to their homeowners? Because obviously, it wasn't burned down on purpose, it was an accident that got out of hand because of vandalism. And I think that that should have been turned in to somebody's homeowner's insurance who was responsible, or restitution or something paid, because the insurance company would pick some of that up if they had gotten a demand letter. I know this because I talked to my friend, shyest person, and they told me that. So I'm wondering what, if we got letters out, and if we didn't, why we didn't? Because it costs the city taxpayers money, and it's money we could be bringing back into our system. So that was my question.
Well, while you're up, I don't have the answer, I wasn't here at the time. I am commonly asked that, and I'd like to hand it off to our city attorney, Chelsea Nelson.
So the individuals that did this were juveniles?
Mm-hmm. But it can still go to their parents.
Yes, but that's a county prosecution. When it's criminally against a juvenile, it goes against the juvenile, and that's a county prosecution. I'm not authorized to charge juveniles.
So did the county contact anyone that you're aware of?
I know they contacted them, I don't believe charges were brought.
Okay, well, I guess I'll have to get ahold of the county, but that doesn't make sense since it's the city property and the city's paying for it, right? Am I wrong?
We would be an alleged victim in that case.
Mm-hmm.
But that itself, if we did have the authority to charge that, we couldn't be the charging entity because we're also the victim.
Who is, who would be the charging entity?
The county attorney's office.
County attorney's office. Okay, and who's the county attorney?
There's Jeff Naglowski and Assistant County Attorney Molly French.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice night.
Seeing no further comment at this time, we can move to new business. Item one, to consider request to begin the application and testing process to create an eligibility roster for the police department with Chief Mike Kostchak. Chief, is this something you would like to present?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Fairly standard procedure, we were notified of a possible vacancy, no definitive date or anything, so as usual, we kinda start a process well ahead of time to have an eligibility roster in the event that we do have a vacancy. Not a request to hire anyone, just a standard protocol to establish a list, so we're not caught off guard.
Thank you.
I'm here to answer any questions as well.
Then that was one of the reasons why I think, and thank you for coming up, was that the process would be to start the eligibility list that's there, in case there's movement in any which way, really, so.
Correct.
I just want that to be understood amongst the group. Questions from council to Chief Kostchak. Seeing no further questions, and thank you, Chief, but no questions from council, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by councillor Holden to approve the request. Is there support?
I'll second.
Support by councillor Kayler, is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, we will now vote, starting with councillor Kayler.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. This is carried unanimously, five zero. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
New business. Item two, consider State of Minnesota contract for hazardous materials response team effective July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2027, and authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute Chief, is this something that you feel requires explanation, or it has to do with our hazmat dollars for the hazmat team?
This is an extension of the same contracts we've been in since 2015 with the state. The biggest difference this year is the amount of reimbursement available. So they upped it from $60,000 a year to $80,000 a year, which is good for us. Cover some of those expenses are, of course, they cover the training and materials that we need to operate that team, and, yeah, not much change substantive other than that.
And just to promote this idea a bit, because I think at times it could be misunderstood, and at the same time, like to make sure that I understand, that this is very important because of some of the activities we have going on within the city, that we receive these dollars to protect our citizens from.
Yep, this provides us with the training and the monitors to identify hazardous materials, unknowns or knowns. I think the biggest misconception is we are not a cleanup contractor, so a great example of that was, we had a call a week ago of somebody spilled, I think it was 200 gallons of fuel oil. It was outside of our city jurisdiction, but within our hazmat response area, and the point was, we knew where it was, we knew what the material was, we knew nothing was in danger, but that doesn't dictate us to go on that run, so that gets reverted over to the county or whoever for finding a cleanup contractor to handle that. So I think that's probably the biggest misconception in the need of the team.
Thank you. Questions from council? I would entertain a motion at this time to approve this agreement.
I'll move.
Motion by councillor Buller.
Second.
Second by councillor Wagner. Discussion? Question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Thank you, Chief. This carries unanimously, five zero. New business, item three, discuss correspondence from our city auditor Ryan Schmidt of Schlenner Wenner and Co. This is a letter that I received to put in to the council packet for this meeting. I would like to read it for the record. This letter was written by Ryan on June 30 of this year. Mayor Dill, I am writing this letter to reiterate and expand upon a particular matter of concern, which I discussed during my presentation to the city council on June 23, 2025. Due to recurring operational deficits in the city's ambulance fund, the amount of cash being borrowed from the city's general fund to the ambulance fund has grown significantly over recent years. To date, these cash advances to the ambulance fund have been accounted for as a short-term loan. This approach explicitly indicates that the ambulance fund intends to repay the general fund. As a result, these borrowings have had no impact on the general fund's overall bottom line, or fund balance. My growing concern is that the accounting approach discussed above may no longer be representative of true facts and circumstances. If no action is taken to address the situation, we as the city auditors will soon be forced to conclude that the amounts borrowed from the general fund to the ambulance fund cannot and will not actually be repaid. Upon reaching this conclusion, we'll need to present the city with the following options during the audit process. First option, record permanent cash transfers into the ambulance fund to begin repaying the amounts borrowed, or to at least prevent further growth of the deficit while a more permanent solution is reached. The cash transfers could come from the general fund or other funds at the discretion of the council. Option two, accept a modified opinion in the audit report specific to the general fund and ambulance fund. In other words, our audit report would be saying that we feel the financial statements are fairly stated, with the exception of these inter-fund borrowings and the related fund balances impact. This would be a deviation from the clean opinion that the city has received, always received in past audit reports. Of course, neither of these options will serve as long-term solutions to the situation. The intention of this letter is solely to inform you of the impending impact of the situation on the city's year-end financial reporting. We understand this is a difficult situation, and we encourage the city to contact us if we can be an assistance, of any assistance in any way. Sincerely, Ryan Schmidt, Schlenner Wenner and Co. Any questions or discussion from the council? We have tentatively called a special city council meeting for Monday night after committee of the whole, will be posted for 6 o'clock, or as soon as the committee of the whole meeting is over. I'd like to take this moment, and I did make an addition to the agenda that was approved this evening. It was a letter that councillor Kayler wrote Mayor Droba and his fellow councillors on October 11, 2023, which I would like to read. Due to the present and growing deficit in the city's ambulance fund, I would propose we as a city council set a timeline with the date of no later than March 1, 2024, to come up with the plan to alleviate this burden from the citizens of International Falls. The city has worked in the past with our county neighbors with no solution at this time. As part of this, I would have us task the ambulance director and city administration with looking into possible solutions, including costs, but not limited to the following. Resume talks with Kuchichin County around an ambulance taxing district, the possibility of an ambulance area fee similar to the county sanitation fee that is added to garbage service fees, staying our present paramedic-based system, combination paramedic EMT teams, return to a BLS system, fire department drivers, engineers being EMTs, paramedic-based service for the city, BLS-based service for the county, go to full-time paramedics and all volunteer fire department, no ambulance service. I know in theory, the state claims we need to have an ambulance. If we don't solve this problem, we will bankrupt as a city, and we won't have money to run ambulance service or anything else. Sincerely, Pete Kayler, Eastward Councillor. I would like to quantify that there is numerous solutions to all of these problems, including raising taxes, cutting taxes, hiring more staff, cutting staff, or anything that this council could come up with. The state of the city finances at this point are of deep concern, and that is why I have made the decision to call the council meeting on next Monday night after committee of the whole. Is there any discussion on this topic, or any other business to come before the council this evening?
I would just say, we just hold off to discuss it further at the special meeting, see if that's four, and give some, everybody let some time to think in, from the older letter that I wrote, and the letter from our auditors, which is really basically what he said when he gave us our audit, more or less, the year before, and we all knew, you know, sooner or later, that this was gonna come to a head, and I think it has, and I think just to help catch up while we ended up, so we're after the letter, we decided that that March, that we still would go with the same system we have, 'cause the state was in the process of looking at some help, and there was maybe some hints that maybe we would reopen, be reopened negotiating with the county. Now, this time down the road, I don't see those as real viable unless something changes the state last Tuesday. I attended a webinar, and there is some help coming, you know, to help with the deficit. I don't know how much, if there's so much money, it gets divided up with all the different ambulance systems in the state, and it's a good chunk of money, but there's also a lot of, I think it's like $8 million this year, and $7 next year. But there's also a lot of ambulance services of all different kinds that are in our predicament, so that'll be shared, and as he also said, the gentleman from the head of the EMS Department said this, and that's only two years, things change, nothing says that will be coming back. So that's kinda where we're at in brief, but anything else, if everybody else, we'd probably wait till the meeting next Monday and let it sink in.
Thank you, councillor, and that will be the intent of the meeting. The agenda will be forthcoming, and will, council will at that time begin working through various issues and ask for decorum as we do that. Is there any other business for the council this evening? We will move back to the five-minute window if there is anyone that would like to come forward for public comment, now would be the time to do that again.
Mayor, councillors. Glenn Davis, 1702 15th Avenue. One question, I had, the mill and overlay in Stenberg is $1.34 million. Will that include fixing the structural issues underneath the surface that are causing the damage to the road? They've already been fixed, maybe five years ago, I don't know the date, and they are already bulging up. I wanted to know, and several other neighbors have asked the same question, is that gonna be addressed?
I think it's a great question. There have been calls to me from that neighborhood, concerns specifically about the storm sewer in Stenberg, and I know that you live there, but I bring my kids there every morning to take care, and so familiar with the topic. I would ask that our city engineer, Jason Fisher, address that. I would like to add one more thing, that when we began working on the mill and overlay for Stenberg, the idea has been to improve the quality of roads or streets that serve that area, and it was pointed out that at some point, the sewer lines in that community have been televised, and there was virtually no issues that warranted replacement. I will pass the rest on to Mr. Fisher.
In that current plan, it's a full-depth patch is what we have in there, not replacing the structures. We are working with the contractor, though, to get a price, and we would probably reduce the contract in other ways, we cut out other work, to possibly replace the structures, but we're still waiting for a price for that, and then we move it out of the road. So we're still in the early stages of doing this.
The concern from the neighbors and myself are that if we don't address those issues, we'll be back in the same position in just a few more years, and that'll be wasted money.
That's a very warranted concern.
A question, you read the letter, different on the ambulance service, and it's a concern for us all. That letter was written in March of '23. Thank you. What progress, what steps have been taken since that point in time to help address? It was a grave concern at that point, now we're even worse situation. What steps were being taken to address it since the letter that he called for?
Well, whether there has or hasn't, the situation has continued to persist. We are down to four paramedics, we did have six, that happened, I believe, by attrition, but if the council would like to, Pete, you, or, excuse me, councillor Kayler, you wrote the letter, not to put you on the spot, but I certainly.
Well, that's just what I explained, that what went on with it, and we decided to stay with the system we had, and like you said, one of the solutions finally took care of itself through attrition. We have an EMT-paramedic combination, so that instead of having two paramedics at the time, like I said, at the time the decision made to stay with it, it was, we're hopeful that we're gonna be back in talks at the county for some assistance, and how much help the state was gonna give, so it's kind of a wait-and-see at that point, but obviously, this is where we're at now, when it's come clear that we're on our own, it looks like.
Thank you. Just in overall, as for city finances, I guess there's encouragement from us to look at how we're gonna reduce costs and expenses so we can bring things in the line. We had a clean opinion, that was good, there was good help, that was nice, but with still the numbers, we're in a situation where if we don't do something, we're gonna be in trouble. So I'm asking our council to address the issues of expenses as opposed to income. I think everybody sitting in this room does not wanna see more drastic increases in taxes, that's why many of us are here. We want it to stop growing as to the rate that it has.
I thank you for.
High five.
That's, I thank you for your comments, and I would.
Thank you, councillors.
I would stick up that what you've said has been echoed amongst many. I would stick up that what you've said has been echoed amongst many. Remind, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Cruz.
Alan Cruz, 8741 East Abyspo Avenue, Mesa, Arizona. Just in regards to the, to the ambulance thing, you know, the one thing that I'm, I've been trying to get my head around is the fact is that how much do we spend for our services? Like to, to serve just International Falls residents? And then how much does it cost to take care of everybody else? Because I think, at least from the people that I've talked to and then for myself is, is that there's almost like three issues. We don't know what we cost in relation to what everybody else costs and then the fund. And I would just encourage when you guys meet next week and is it open to the public?
Unless, yes, all meetings are open to public unless they're for very specific issues.
And I would just say is that I would much rather the council not have creative accounting, and I don't mean that in like a nefarious way, but just like know what, know where we're at. You know, the audit's nice and it, and it paints a nice picture, but the auditor even said that, you know, he goes out of his way to create, you know, to use accounting to create a favorable outlook to make it look not as harsh, not putting words in his mouth, that's summarizing, but is, I just want to know where we're at and I think we all do. To where if 90% of the bill is International Falls, then getting help from the county doesn't really solve a whole lot of issues. But if the counties may, you know, if the county Kooch and St. Louis is making up 40%, then that's a completely different conversation. And from the letter two years ago is, state's not coming to help. Just like I said with LGA is that let's not, let's not get comfortable relying on the state to chuck some money at us to get us to be quiet for two more years. Is, let's deal with the situation on whatever that is and then, as ugly as it might be. And I look forward to seeing what you guys come up with next week. And I appreciate you putting together the, the meeting there, Mayor, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Bobby Burnett, 1906 Avenue. I know about three weeks ago, we all talked about the police department, where they're going to be housed. Have you guys had any meetings with the county or any of that?
Yes.
I guess what's happening, is there anything happening that we should know about?
Yes, it's moving along.
Okay.
I think that there's optimism on both sides.
Okay.
But at the end of the day, our department has needs. Everyone has needs and we hope that we can come to something that's fair and equitable. And then the council will decide if it makes sense or not and we'll either do it or we'll take our lumps and move on to something else. But it, it is progressing. I think that there's been at least one get-together a week on, on that, so.
Oh, okay.
Counselor Wagner, would you echo that?
Yes.
So has, am I right if I say Cross Anderson, have they done that inspection or anything like that? You know, on the building, you were guys were going to have somebody do the inspection to get a number?
On the Kutaska project.
Correct.
From the, the general facility study from, was it November?
Yeah.
I have to defer that to the Public Safety Committee.
That was done, but not on the old LEC, but on the.
On the.
Kutaska building?
Yeah. And how much was that?
I guess I can't say off the top of my head.
Do you guys have any number or?
In front of me, I can get it.
No, but you can get it for me? Okay, I just want to know because if we're, you know, if we spend a little pieces of pie like that, eventually it ends up to be a big piece of pie. And if we're not going to do that, why, why are we spending that kind of money? If we're going to go with, say, the county or Bacchus or whoever, do you know what I'm saying? I just don't quite understand that. I know it's maybe only 20,000, but in my book, 20,000 is a lot. And if you do it five times, that's 100,000. You know, so I, I just, I'd like to know that number if you guys could get that for me.
What it cost for the study? That's what you're asking?
The study, it's not the original study, but isn't it an extra study? Because they already did an original study, correct? But then wasn't there an extra study?
Do you mean the, when they provided the cost of the different things that needed to be fixed? How much that report cost, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
You mean the estimate, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, it's not the original, but you guys, there was going to be another study.
We must keep the discussion upfront, please, thank you.
I'm sorry. It was supposed to be another study done after that, like in February.
Wasn't there some discussion on if we were looking into the LEC now that we would make the study on that as far as the mold or, or any type of, was that ever talked, was that one we talked about?
It's been talked about, not at the council level, because there are some of those services that are available because of the work that they currently have going on for their own use, whether we ever used it or not or.
But the original study of the Kucha Taska, you got a number, okay? They gave you a number of, I don't know, five or whatever it was, million. Now, there was going to be another study done. Am I correct or am I not?
I'm not aware of one.
I'm not aware of one.
There was the study where it was broken into two stages.
Okay.
Is that the cost you're wondering? No.
Mrs. Burnett, are you, there was, I seem to recall a time where the, this was in the fall, I believe, that the initial facilities condition assessment was presented at a committee of the whole that phased the project up to around $5 million in which then it was being looked at of how to get that facility to a move-in ready or usable basis.
And there was another study done, right, correct?
I don't, I'm not.
I thought, okay. Trying to think of the month, but what happened was that's when everybody got into an uproar. They thought that the police were going to move out to Kucha Taska because it was approved to look at another study.
If the, I would like to get this question as close to answered as we can. I'm not aware that we've gone forward with anything at this time.
I, I think what might, when at that time, if I remember it now, that I'm sitting here listening, everybody talking, there was, if we were to move forward with Carl Sanderson to start looking at doing some adjustments to what they said would cause what we'd need to move in there. But we never really moved ahead with that once because it was like a week later or not that long after that, that we decided to renegotiate with the county. So I don't think we even ever started that.
Okay.
I think is what happened.
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought.
No, not a problem.
No, we want to make sure that there is clarification to those questions. So I think that that's representative of where we are this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Rhonda Benedict, 909 Sixth Street. I was just wondering, did you ever get an answer back on the state funding for the water plant? Things been said, I was just wondering.
The, the council voted three to two, two or three meetings ago.
Yeah.
To move ahead with the project.
Right.
And borrowing the funds. We did have a bonding request for state funds.
Yeah.
To the project, there was not a bonding bill, there was a bonding bill passed in the legislature. There was not a bonding bill passed with local projects. We had the opportunity to either move ahead with the water plant project or wait another year in the hopes of getting bonding dollars, which was ultimately, the project has been moved ahead.
Oh, so that means you get no funding or you still could get funding in a year?
Very unlikely.
Because you moved ahead?
Correct.
Okay. As far as the ambulance go, I have a couple of questions, you might not know the answer. But a little while ago, the ambulance was not transporting people out of town. Other ambulances were coming and picking up patients, correct?
I'm, if I may, we're going to be having the special city council meeting on Monday. So I'd like to keep most items on that topic to then. But if there's ambulance-related questions of that magnitude or regard, I would like to defer to our ambulance, to our fire chief, Chief Manasa.
Sure.
If you have a specific question for that.
Okay.
Which you're welcome to ask now.
Okay, and then a few, few years back, I'm going to say seven years back, some of our doctors that were delivering babies would not deliver babies if it was on the weekend. So it forced patients to be transferred to other hospitals, Hibbing, Bemidji. So even if it wasn't life-threatening or immediate danger, they, they had to be transferred. So that forced, you know, ambulance bills at that time. So, I mean, that kind of upped the ambulance intake, I guess you would say. I don't know if they're doing that now or not, but that, that was the case back then.
And how long ago?
That was about seven years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So that kind of helped the ambulance along a little bit, I would say, back then. That one I knew for sure, but anyways, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Reminders, our next regular city council meeting is in two weeks. Monday, July 21st of this year at 5:30 PM. There is no further business to come before the council and this meeting is adjourned.